Hey guys, little bit different kind of content for you today. Today, we have a simulation, a game that has been played. A city council game that we played with our econ club at WKU. And we had a great time doing it. I want to show you a little bit about how the game is set up, just super quick, basic stuff. If you would like to hop to just see the game played, there's a link down in the description of this video where you can find that. You can also find in this description of the video links to more information about the game. You can get the PDF that I'm describing here and all of that good stuff available down in the description. There you go, alright, so diving on in, the goal of this game was to kind of show students a little bit about how local government works, especially with public finance and the allocation of, you know, kind of tax resources and all that. It's building on the work of Dr. Nikirk, Mark Nikirk of Northern Kentucky University. Fabulous fellow, created a really cool city council simulation based on Cincinnati's city council and, you know, their experience trying to provide a monorail and stuff like that. Really cool work that he did. We're building on that a little bit. Kind of took this idea and ran with it. His was very professionally done, very by-the-book simulation of the city council. This, you know, that was more towards adult learners, kind of grad student type level. This is very light, very fun, could be played with maybe even high schoolers, so secondary or early college would be perfect for this. So, light, fun, just letting students' personalities shine, letting them kind of have a little fun, use their charisma and, you know, joke around a little bit while learning these important lessons. So, you know, kind of not portraying anybody, but might be inspired, you know, these roles in the game are inspired by, you know, real political leaders. Basically, they're just common archetypes in politics and communities. So, we expect, and I think we've shown that, you know, people are gonna, students will understand at the end of this, the different roles in a typical municipal government, how the different stakeholders are gonna play into those roles. So, kind of the interaction of city council members, mayors, and, you know, community members, interest groups, things like this. And they're gonna kind of hopefully be able to have basic competence of how local governments function and really this kind of procedural meeting feeling, right? So, if you're gonna run this game, this PDF should have pretty much everything you need to do it. Each character that you have, each player that you have is gonna need an activity reference guide labeled page one, a meeting agenda labeled page two, and a character bio. So, ideally, this would be given out privately. The way I did it, I had Manila file folders that were sealed with these different characters in them. And the way I decided who got what character, I had descriptions of each character. I used one word description. So, we had a role that was very charismatic person, you know, this kind of glad-handing politician-type archetype. And that person, I said, okay, who's charismatic? And we let, you know, whoever raised their hand to be charismatic fill that role. You know, I had a professor role, that person, oh, who's a scholar, who's a good researcher, you know? And that's one way to do it. You could randomly assign the roles, you could let them pick for themselves. I think it would be more fun to, you know, assign them somehow to get people a little out of their comfort zone, really, you know, immerse themselves in these characters. So, again, these are kind of sealed envelopes. The reason they're sealed is because each player has their own goals, they have their own private information. They know things that the other players don't know. So, letting them have private information is really important to the flow of the game. It's gonna make it far more immersive, way more interesting to play it like that. The way I've got this written, the game is for eight to 12 players. You could definitely throw more players into it if you wanted to. Eight is the minimum. A little note, in our recording, we only had seven, so I actually played the role of the mayor, which made it a little easier to kind of show the flow of the game in this recording, which is great. So, okay, if you're, if you're familiar with the functioning of municipal governments, you're gonna know that, hey, this isn't, you know, a one-to-one copy. This isn't a, you know, picture-perfect visualization of exactly what happens at a city council meeting. You know, some of it is more, some of it is less. But the goal wasn't to, you know, perfectly capture what a city council meeting looks like from start to finish. Rather, it was to kind of mimic the broad strokes ideas while conveying, you know, how, you know, the sausage gets made, more or less, right? So, you're gonna recognize things maybe don't look perfectly accurate. Well, it's a game, right? It's a game trying to convey these big ideas. So, yeah, we set this up, it's the city of Townsburg. And the big idea of the game, the whole, you know, premise is that there is a tax surplus. So, last year, we had a great year, got a big tax surplus. What are we gonna do with it, right? So, it's kind of like that episode of The Office. If you're familiar with The Office, where they have a surplus of funds at the end of the year, and they're trying to decide whether to spend it on chairs or a new coffee. Well, in this case, we've got this tax surplus. We're trying to decide whether to spend it on a housing assistance program or on a new business tax credit. So, got these two different perspectives. Obviously, one is kind of traditional, one side of the political aisle, and then one's on the other, traditional side of the political aisle. And together, we've got two different perspectives that can hopefully kind of show, you know, the different views on what the proper role of a city government should be, what it should be doing. So, that's the broad premise of what is played. Obviously, I encourage you guys to have students use parliamentary procedure. Oh, Mayor so-and-so, council member this, Mr. Mrs. Doctor, very respectful through this whole thing, is the goal, to give it more of an immersive feel. So, it's, you know, there's, there's a, there's a guide, you know, there's an agenda, but there's no script. So, it should feel loose, it should feel fun. You're gonna see people laughing, people joking in this video, which is super-duper cool. So, again, those are the two proposals. Are we gonna provide housing assistance to lower-income folks or a new business tax credit? And this is the agenda. Obviously, we'll have some basic call-to-order type stuff. The way we have it set up, again, not a perfect agenda from a city council, but should give us the feel. So, the new business, before we get to voting, we're gonna do outline of the issue by the mayor. We're gonna have testimony from the experts, so the professors, city manager, community members, and interest groups are gonna get their chance to speak on the matter. And then the council members will get their chance to speak at last. Do the same thing for proposal two, and then we'll have a brief recess. You know, obviously, we may not even have a recess in a actual city council meeting. Very frequently, they don't at all. The reason I've included this is kind of to represent in the game, you know, all the stuff that goes up leading into the city council meeting. So, members of the community get to go talk to the city council members. Interest groups get to go perhaps try to use their influence to sway city council members to vote one way or the other. And this is where that is represented. Okay, yeah, maybe it doesn't show up perfectly, but it does, you know, allow the very realistic persuasion that goes on to show up somewhere in the game instead of being left out just because it wouldn't show up in an actual city council meeting night, right? But this is still things that happen. And then you're gonna vote on proposal one and two. Either one needs a majority of the city council members to pass, and then gonna call it a night. So, I've got here all the different character bios. I'm gonna just skip through this real quick to say, there's a mayor who's gonna run things. The mayor has their own agenda so that they have lots of notes on what happens when. And then after the mayor, we've got our four city council members. And each of them has their own kind of background and their own positions, their own goals. Don't want to dive into all that here, you'll kind of feel it come out in the video that you watch, the recording. We've got our two lobbyists or our two interest groups. We've got a kind of people-oriented, you know, looking to help the lower-income folks. And on the other side, we've got a more business-oriented, looking to, you know, kind of economic prosperity goals. And they're gonna represent their, their associated folks. So, of course, we've got a professor who's gonna come in and supply their unique knowledge. They've got facts that they can choose to share or not. And we've got the city manager, who also has some private knowledge that he can share, he or she can share or not. And we've got our three community members, which all have their different perspectives on these proposals. Again, the community members are optional, but could, you know, potentially add quite a bit to this experience. Alright, so without further ado, I'll just throw it in. We'll, we'll go ahead and watch this recording. Again, all of this stuff is available in the links in the description down below. So, let's do it, oh my goodness. You may now open your packets. Alright, everyone has the same first page of their packet, so we'll start right there. Today, we're gonna be playing a simulation of a small-town city council. Welcome to the city of Townsburg, a community of roughly 60,000, which has grown recent years alongside the regional public university. Tonight, we are city council members trying to decide what to do with a $10 million tax surplus. Last year was a great year, so we absolutely, town took off, and we brought in more money than we spent. And now, we gotta decide what to do with that money. Some of you guys are city officials, some of you guys are experts, some of you guys are advocates on behalf of an interest group. Be sure to be respectful. We're gonna be led by the mayor, who will be me this fine evening. I'll be the mayor of Townsburg. And when addressing each other, be sure to refer to each other formally. I am mayor or Mr. Mayor, councilman, councilwoman, et cetera, et cetera. And the goal here is for either proposal to get at least three votes. But we all have our own agendas. You can read about your own personal agenda on your character bio page, the third page of the packet. That's where you'll see all about yourself. It'll say the role that you fill. And you'll go ahead, name your character, and then use the last page of your packet to create a name tag, a little table pen name tag. And if I could, you guys know who you are now. If I could have my city council members come sit around me, and my members of the community come sit in these seats in front of me, that would be just fantastic. And if I get my community members, whenever it's convenient, come up here to the front and join us. You do get to name your character, a last name is fine. So, just give your character some last name that you think is fitting of their role. And when you are ready, I have some Sharpies for you to make your table pen name tag, and we'll be diving on in. If you are a member of an interest group, your title may just be Mister. You can put that you are a lobbyist, but we'll refer to you as Mister. We have no females playing. Has everybody read their character background in your, well, I suppose, before we talk about what your position on the issues is, we should briefly introduce the two proposals on how to spend this $10 million surplus. Proposal number one is to spend it on a housing assistance program to help lower-income communities in Townsburg be able to afford their monthly rent. And proposal two is a new tax incentive for new businesses and companies coming in to the town. I'm gonna go ahead and get started, if that works with everybody. Just go ahead and read your character background, learn a little bit about yourself, and go ahead and start becoming the character that you see described on these pages. That is you for the next however long this game lasts. Alright, all business now. Let this meeting of the Townsburg City Council come to order. Councilman one?
Here.
Councilman one, if you'll lead us in the pledge. Councilman Preston?
Well?
If you wanna look at the, if you'll turn to your agenda, Councilman Preston, you'll see that the first thing we'll be doing is the pledge of allegiance. So, let's go ahead and turn towards that flag in the back of the class, and if you'll lead us, Councilman Preston.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you all honored guests for joining us at this April 20th meeting of the Townsburg City Council. Today, I'll go ahead and welcome our guests here. Of course, we've got all members of the city council here to represent themselves. I'd also like to turn a special welcome to Mr. Depp. And who are you representing tonight, Mr. Depp?
I am Chief Advocate for Prosperous Future Campaign.
Alright, so we've got Mr. Depp from the Prosperous Future Campaign. We've got Professor Wilson, who's come to give us some expert testimony today. And we've got Mr. Craig. And Mr. Craig is here on behalf of whom?
You already know the answer to that, but I'm chief advocate for the Four to People campaign.
The Four to People campaign?
Four to people? Four to people.
Alright. Well, that is great. If everyone's ready, we'll go ahead and proceed to new business and discussing proposal one. Obviously, we've got this big tax surplus, and we are trying to decide what to do with it tonight. So, I'll go ahead and read proposal one aloud. Townsburg will allocate $10 million to create a housing assistance program, which offers monetary rent assistance to the community's lower-income residents. The details of this program to be determined by the city manager in consultation with community stakeholders. Alright, that is the proposal on the board, proposal number one. We'd like to start today by inviting testimony from our expert. The only expert that we have today is Professor Wilson. Professor Wilson, are you prepared to give your statements?
I am, yes.
Alright, well, I'm gonna turn the focus of this meeting on to you.
Alright. Well, now, I, I'm here as a professor, so I seek to remain objective. However, the facts do say that incentives for new businesses have shown to cause spikes in the local economy. I decided to put that out there, that's just, just a fact, and I might chime in later, but there's your first fact of the day.
Alright, so that's some, that's some good information, Professor Wilson. Council members, do any of you have a question for Professor Wilson, particularly when it comes to his opinions on proposal number one, the housing program?
Well, yeah, you've been working with economics for some time, and I've lived here all my life. We are a hard-working, thriving community. If we give excess housing incentives and money out to people who necessarily aren't making their own wages, do you think we're gonna have a less hard-working and less fruitful town?
So, there is some concerns from other, from other cities that subsidizing the rent may come with some not-so-good incentives. For example, some renters will use the city funds to upgrade their apartments instead of fixing their own financial obligations, like bills, things like that. That's a concern from other towns, though. But again, I seek to remain objective.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions from our city council members up here around me on what our esteemed Professor Wilson has to say on either this, this first proposal?
I would like to ask something of the professor. So, Professor, my ideology suggests that with this $10 million budget surplus, would it be a potentially viable option to put that back in the pockets of the taxpayers rather than creating a housing assistance program, which you have already outlined, might possess some restraints?
By, by putting it back into the?
Just refund us.
Refund?
Tax return.
Okay, proposal number, is that one of the proposals? That's just, that's just a, it's an idea, okay, okay. You know?
In your humble opinion.
In my humble opinion, well, again, I, I seek to remain objective, but...
Could we see economic development that way?
I believe so, yes. I, I think if you, if you put the money back, you know, just like a stimulus check, like it's called, stimulus. So, you know, stimulate the economy. We could potentially see some growth in the economy.
Alright, we'll go ahead and turn forward now. I think we've heard enough from Professor Wilson, unless you have anything to add?
That is all?
Alright, that's all Professor Wilson is choosing to share with us on that issue. We'll go ahead and turn to any comments from interest groups or members of the community? Anybody have anything else that they want to add on this question of proposal number one, a housing program?
I'd like to speak, if that's alright?
Oh, Mr. Depp, what do you, what do you have to contribute today?
So, proposal one, you know, it's a nice, it's a nice sentiment. It gives you those kind of fuzzy feelings inside, maybe. But what we're creating here, gentlemen, is a malicious counter-incentive for the members of our community. We've created so many jobs this last year. And what are we gonna do with that money? We're gonna use it to subsidize some people who might just want to loaf around with that money. So, I'm wholly against proposal number one. I think we're working for around here, have enough jobs to choose from, and and we're gonna provide that, we're gonna provide them that opportunity instead of welfare.
Alright, fair enough, a bold stance from Mr. Depp. Mr. Craig, do you have anything to add on this question?
Yes, Mayor Olson, I do. And I disagree with my counterpart over there. You know, I truly believe that rental assistance could change lives, you know? We're sitting here having this whole conversation of what should we do with this money? In reality, it's sitting right in front of us, what should we, what we should do with this money? You give people rental assistance, they can start to make more money, they get back up on their feet, and we have this conversation next year. These people are back up on their feet, we've already fixed part of the problem. So, you can strike one off the list for next year. Easy decision.
Alright, well, I think we've heard from the community. Does anyone else have anything to add, or?
I mean, I'm still trying to figure out what's going on.
Yeah, for sure.
I'll be on, I'll be on to the second, the second proposal.
Sounds good, alright. Any comments from the council members? I will ask that you keep it brief. I know we had a problem with Councilman Preston running off at the mouth at the last meeting. I don't want to repeat him last time. Alright, do we have any brief comments from one of the councilmen's on proposal one before we move on to hearing community involvement on proposal two?
I would like to say something on the record. Given my background as a low-income impoverished childhood citizen, I, I believe that each person should find their own way in this world, and the handout shouldn't be given. So, I would be very happy now passing proposal one. And I would urge my counterparts to think the same. Thank you.
Alright, yes, Councilman Schmidt?
Yes, I acknowledge my fellow councilmen's thoughts and ideas on this matter, but being of similar background myself, I believe that little assistance goes a long way, especially in these communities that are often overlooked. And this proposal number one, as we've outlined, is funded through tax surplus dollars, and disproportionately is paid through higher-income workers who would donate more taxes to the city. So, I believe that this restructuring or refunding of funds to help lower-income folks would be a good idea and a good use of funds. So, I acknowledge your thoughts, Councilman Dornsby. I'm going to have to disagree, and I hope everyone in the room sees my points for in support of proposal number one.
Alright, any comments from our other councilmen's, or?
Well, I'm staying from talking. I'll keep this one brief from like last meeting. My family has been here since the start of this town just about. And
We have experienced time and time again that our community is capable of great uprising and economic capabilities. We keep, you know, furthering the amount of people in this town and the amount of productivity. New businesses are opening all the time, RVs just down the road, brand-new business, new jobs opening up. I think that if this is an investment, and that's how we should look at it, we need to reinvest this money into more business because we are at the bottom of what about to be a really big swing and economic boom. Things are going really well in our way. We need to reinvest this money. If we give up now, we're settling. And I'm not one to settle, alright? That's all I have to say, I'll speak my piece.
Alright, well, we'll go ahead and move on to proposal number two. I, I don't wanna dilly-dally. I want us to roll on through the topics so we can get to our brief recess and then our, our vote for this evening. Proposal number two, Townsburg will allocate $10 million to create a tax incentive for new businesses, which will subsidize businesses that start in or move which will subsidize businesses that start in or move to Townsburg. The details of this program to be determined by our illustrious city manager at a later date." Alright, let's go ahead and open it up. That's the basic idea. We'll go ahead and open it up to expert testimony. Start with you, Professor Wilson. What wisdom do you have for us on this issue of Proposal Number Two?
I'm about to drop a fact bomb on you all. You all are ready for this, weren't you?
I said before that the incentives for new businesses have shown to cause short-term spikes in the local economy. But the fact bomb is, it has not been associated with long-term economic growth. The incentives for businesses are not associated with long-term economic growth. So I'm just gonna let you all sit on that for a little bit, and I'll end my testimony right there.
Alright. I hate to put you on the spot, Professor, but did any of the council members have any additional questions for our expert testimony from the professor?
Well, I know that my personal experience has been the exact opposite of that. As a young man, and the same for my father, some of the local businesses here gave us our big break. It's what helped us to make our living that we make today. It was from the help of legislation and local business that I am where I am today.
Now, of course, I seek to remain objective. But that's just after running my OLS progression using R, I found that it is not associated with long-term economic growth. That's just what the data says. Now, although it's associated with short-term spikes, it doesn't tend to last.
Alright, wise words from Professor Wilson. Did we have any expert testimony from our city manager on this issue, Proposal Number Two?
I mean, I object. I think we should like use the money for like worse issues in the coming years. Save it and keep it in the treasury.
Fair perspective from the city manager, advocating for putting our money in a rainy-day fund. Perhaps we should just hold on to this money.
Hold on to it. Don't waste it on anything silly right now, and yeah.
A fair perspective from the city manager, Manager Harrow. Alright, well, thank you very much. Let's pass it over. Any interest groups or community members have anything to say about this question? Mr. Depp?
Yes, I'd like to speak. With all due respect to the professor, gentlemen, we all know a little startup capital is what we... What any business needs to get started, right? We need to grease the wheels of capitalism a little bit here, folks. We need to get things moving. We're in the middle of a boom cycle right now. That one might not last. We don't keep our businesses in the red, or in the black, whatever. In the black. We want to be in the black. So we need to pass Proposal Two as soon as possible, my friends.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Depp. Any questions for Mr. Depp from the councilmen before we move on? Oh, alright. It seems like Mr. Craig has something to say. We'll pass it over his way. What do you have to say, Mr. Craig?
Mr. Craig, Chief Advocate for the For the People Campaign, always considered my friend here, Professor Wilson, a man of intellect, and that he is. And I mean, he said it's spot-on. Business taxes in this town need to be higher, not lower. For example, Mr. Thornsby, can I borrow you here?
Yes.
Alright.
Do as you will.
I say you get a thousand dollars. Sounds good, right? And you want that? But what if that thousand dollars is coming out of his pocket, you know? By providing these businesses incentives, who are the tax burdens falling on, you know? The money has to come from somewhere.
Well-spoken, Mr. Craig. Any comments or questions from our council members from Mr. Craig?
Well, if the tax dollars are reinvested in business, right, you follow me? And it comes out of our pocket? And we then reap those benefits by being the employees of those businesses, wouldn't you agree? Doesn't it come full circle? Well, if we use our tax surplus to reinvest in business, we are also the workers of the businesses, right? If we can make businesses more successful, then we, the employees, are also more successful.
I would argue that it's the employees that make the business successful.
Yeah, I think that as well. That is something to be taken into account. But you have to have a good money standpoint for the employees to capitalize on it.
Alright, I'll open it up to any comments from our distinguished city council members? Councilman O'Flynn?
I just have a question. Do we have any information on what the public consensus is on this issue?
Well, you know, we've collected surveys, but you know how those surveys are fairly unreliable. Broadly, we can say there is support for either position. Mr. Depp, you have something to add on this?
Councilman, I can assure you, the public has your full support for Proposal Two. I've done countless surveys. The public, business leaders in the community, they want this to happen soon. So, in the next election, you might want to consider this proposal very carefully.
Goodness. Well, Mr. Depp? Alright. Anything else from the council members on this question? Ah, yes, Councilmember Thornsby, yes.
His distinguished councilmember, Thornsby, would like to share the sentiment of lobbyist Craig approximately and say, yes, these tax dollars came from somewhere. They came from your pockets. And business in our town is doing well at our current juncture in this meeting. And I believe that further incentivizing these businesses, or I guess the proposal mentions new businesses, might overheat our economy and we might see some of those effects later down the road. And I would like to duly express that government in and of itself is ineffective and we should not be taking whatever sort of new series with new path with new businesses that may surge tax-worthy in our town.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Thornsby. Anything else from the council before we move on?
Yeah, just to reiterate, what was your position, Councilman Thornsby?
I'm against this.
Okay. I was just... I heard some rumors that Councilman Thornsby had an affair a few years ago.
Councilman O'Flynn?
My current voting and the financial success of our town.
Alright, I think it's time I bring this meeting back to order. This is highly, highly unusual. Councilman O'Flynn, with your classic grandstanding, at it again. Oh, my goodness. Well, I suppose it's time. Let us take a brief recess. We're gonna take a ten-minute break. We'll come back and get to our voting on these proposals. We'll go ahead and stop it briefly right there.
Oh, brief recess, pardon me.
Councilman Thornsby, can I drop your ear for a second?
What can I do for you?
So, I understand that you have some difficulties in the latest election. Is that correct? Maybe we can come to an arrangement here. I think that you have the right mindset on this one. And we can get you... No, no, we can get you some much-needed legitimate political support from the business community. What would you think about that, Councilman Thornsby? Well, naturally, business community favors Proposal Number Two. Now, of course, this is all up to you and your integrity, right? You're a very integrity man, integrity-full man. But your constituents and the people I talk to greatly favor Proposal Two. So can I get your pulse on this one? Thank you, Councilman Thornsby. It's always a pleasure. I know you'll do the right thing for this community.
That wasn't a good one, was it?
No.
Okay.
Was it not?
I threw that by.
Yeah, that was a good touch.
He's a beautiful man.
That guy. If you want to try and talk about it, he voted for either one.
I only have so much time in the day, Councilman. You're very important to me, so I wanted to make drinks and dine with you and get your thoughts on the matter very quickly.
Mr. Depp, I take it you're a fan of big business?
I represent business in the community. I'm an advocate for all sorts of small businesses, big businesses, all businesses in the community.
How many businesses do you own, Mr. Depp? How much... I think of a businessman, are you? Which one of your businesses are gonna benefit from this?
Sir, I'm a home worker, just like you. Most of my income comes from labor, not capital.
Can I ask, what's your proposal, Mr. Lobbyist?
Proposal Two. I'm telling you, we need Proposal Two jobs, not handouts. Grease the wheels of capitalism. Let's go.
Okay, well, if we could know your stance on this, Mr. Lobbyist Craig, nothing that you'd like to appeal to Councilman Thornsby, who's...
Certain people, no, you know? Certainly doesn't even be said to be obvious.
You don't need my services at all, wondering I'm in a voting position and have an open ear to any...
So what does your lobby have to offer?
Listen, Proposal Two is not just about us. It's about everybody. We're gonna use this money to ring everybody. Of course, everyone in the community will love you if you support Proposal Two. It's very simple. What's that? I can hear them. They're outside. They're chanting. Proposal Two! Proposal Two!
Alright, everybody. I think it's about time to call this meeting back to order.
Think about it, council members. A big, beautiful popsicle stick factory. We'll see about it.
Has everybody perhaps played any special ability cards that they wanted to play? Everybody's made their moves in that regard? Yeah, you gotta pick somebody and bless them. Can't be forced.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Alright, I believe... Is everybody ready? Let's go ahead and head into the vote? Yes. Alright, let the voting commence. Here's what I'm gonna need. From each council member on each proposal, I will need an aye, a nay, or an abstention. Alright, so we'll work from role. Councilmember Schmidt. Proposal Number One, the housing assistance program.
Aye.
Vote is aye. Councilmember Thornsby. Proposal Number One.
Nay.
Nay on the housing assistance program. Illustrious Councilmember O'Flynn. Proposal Number One, the housing assistance program. What is your vote, sir?
I say aye.
Councilman Schmidt says aye. And Councilman Preston? Proposal Number One, nay. Two ayes and two nays. The proposal fails to pass. And it dies in the city council tragically.
Wait, can I use this card? I don't know how to use it.
Oh, that's a... It's already been played.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know.
Alright, alright. Proposal Two is for a small business tax investment. Again, to each council member, I will need an aye, a nay, or an abstention. Councilman Schmidt?
Nay.
Nay. Councilman Thornsby?
Aye.
Aye. Councilman Preston?
Aye.
And Councilman O'Flynn?
Nay.
Nay. Oh, well, it appears as if both of these proposals have failed. Both proposals have failed. So the ten million dollars will be added to the treasury. We will be reserving it for future years. Unfortunately, I'm, you know, as mayor, I'm a little disappointed that we weren't able to get any action done. I have to grandstand for just a moment and lay the blame for this inaction directly at the feet of the city council. I can only do so much in my role as mayor. I wanted some action to be done tonight, but no action was resolved. I apologize to the members of the community who have been failed. But as these things go, I would like to say thank you for everyone for coming out. Perhaps in the future, we'll have a more effective legislative meeting. Wow, what a day. Thank you, members of the community, for coming. Professor Wilson, Mr. Craig, Mr. Depp, of course, City Manager Harrow. Always a pleasure to have you here, and we will call it right there. Thank you. This adjourns our April twentieth city council meeting.